Okay. Let's call to order the Planning Commission hearing of February 21st, 2018. Michael, would you like to lead in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure would. Do we stand? Mr. Quag, are we?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amber, would you call the roll?
Aye. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Rowland.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
And note that Wu and Brown are absent tonight.
Okay, the next item is Special Orders of Business, which we have none. We have a study session and a set of minutes to approve, and Jason Tally will be abstaining from the minutes for this meeting. He was not in attendance at that meeting. So do we have a motion or any corrections?
First, any comments that we approve the minutes?
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes, what have we got, five?
Four.
Four?
Four.
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one.
Four, zero, one. There we go. And...
Yes.
So, well, we have the study session and the regular meeting. Okay. Oral and written communications, member of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have any cards for public comment? Okay. Consent calendar, we have none. So we will go on to the public hearing. We have two items this evening. Item A is 1031 Caie Recodo C, conditional use permit 17-241, Calvary Chapel, San Clemente. And, let's see, that is A.
And just before we begin, I'd like to introduce Assistant Planner Veronica Maronis.
Yes.
And I don't know if she's actually presented before you tonight, so I just wanted to introduce you, let her know that she's a new permanent staff member on staff, and we're very excited to have her. She comes from the city of Carlsbad.
And we have seen her at DRS.
Yes, thank you. Yes, please. I'll take it. Good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So the project before you is conditional use permit 17-241, Calvary Chapel, San Clemente, a request to consider a church and accessory uses, shared parking agreement, and amplified sound indoors. Where am I pointing this exactly? Oh, there we go. Okay. So the proposed project is located at 1031 Caie Recodo in Suite C. The site is located in the Rancho San Clemente specific plan in the business park zoning designation. The site is developed with a office building with current tenants operating between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., and the site has 50 parking spaces. The proposed project is a request to consider a church and accessory uses during the evenings beginning at 6:00 p.m. and all day Sunday, a shared parking agreement in order to, in order for the church to meet the required parking, and amplified sound indoors for music and instrumentation and vocals for services and accessory uses. The site's parking is broken down based on weekday daytime where the entire office building is utilizing office uses, including church administrative offices. All the required parking is met. The proposed conditional use is during the evenings starting at 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and all day Sunday. The building's office tenants are closed during this time, so a shared parking agreement is needed for the church, which proposes 163 seats, and accessory uses to meet the required parking. The shared parking agreement allows for all 50 parking spaces on-site to be utilized, and conditions of approval nine and 10 limit the church seating as well as the accessory uses to the 50 parking spaces on-site. Staff supports the project. As the required findings can be met, the business park in and of itself has, allows for a wide range of uses, including religious uses. Previous church uses have been approved in the business park. The site is located over 1,000 feet from the nearest residential lots, and the proposed church and accessory uses are to occur during off-peak times, again, the evenings and Sunday. And the amplified sound is proposed indoors with best management practices according to our noise ordinance, with windows and doors to be shut. So staff recommends approval of conditional use permit 17-241. Staff is available for any question, and the applicant is here as well.
Any questions of Veronica? Well, your cup's in the way there. Okay, Jim.
You're welcome. Thank you. Do we know what the current occupancy rate is for the business park? Seventy percent, ninety percent? Do you have any sense of that?
I do not know that. No, I don't have an exact amount. There is always some small amount of vacancy in the park. If I had to take a best guess, I would say eighty-five to ninety percent occupied.
Okay, but we're not pressed in the business park.
No, no, and I, and that is a concern that I know that the Planning Commission has expressed in the past, is what types of uses are occupying our business park, and to making sure that we still have a healthy mix of uses in the business park, and that it's not being dominated by a certain use potentially, and that is something that we're working on with our GIS department, to monitor that as well. I think that's where that question was going.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Blackwell?
Yeah, so the parking, so requirement is forty-one stalls, and there are fifty proposed as part of the project?
There are fifty existing parking spaces on-site, and the 163 seats requires forty-one parking spaces.
Okay, so we're going to be utilizing every one of those stalls for the most part?
I believe...
Eight of them?
Well, yes.
Okay. Are those eight stalls going to be reserved for other tenants?
So the nine stalls that would be remaining, because the church use and accessory uses are proposed at off-peak times, based on city records, there aren't any other tenants in the building that operate during the hours proposed by the church and accessory uses. So all 50 parking spaces would be available to the church.
And, this might, I don't know if this is a good question. At this point in time, I apologize for the untimeliness of it, if that is even, but that's the issue, or the case. The issue is that the property is surrounded by a crib wall, so there was some cut done to accommodate for the structure and a proper setback in usability of the drive aisle and parking. In the crib wall, though it's not always a requirement when you install a crib wall, you have the right fill and compaction behind it, it's often seen as a condition, it's not uncommon to see a condition to plant the crib wall. So you get root structure in there, it helps fortify that wall. And I'm noticing that all of the plants, and I got out of my car and looked up close, it looks like there was intention to plant things in that crib wall, and it's all dead, all the way around the property, as if irrigation had been terminated at some point. So there was no source of water for the plants. And I don't know if that is a problem, or if that was a condition of approval for the original development, but I am concerned about that, and it is unattractive, you know, statically, it just doesn't meet the intention if it was for aesthetics anyway.
So I think it's a great question. It's not one that applies to this particular project, but what staff can do is, that would have applied to the site as a whole, and most likely was a condition of approval, so we can go back and look at those conditions of approval, and if that landscaping was required to be maintained, which I'm sure it was, we would then talk to the property owner.
Okay, great, thank you. And can we add, just a review of the entire parcel? There's lots of dead vegetation, there are missing trees, trees that have been, that have died and been removed, but the stumps remain. At the, at the exit point in this photo here, right to the right, behind the, the blue sign there in that, in that landscape buffer, the hedge, there are three trees that were there at one point in time and have been removed, only stumps remain. So it'd be great if you could look at that, and maybe copy a little help.
Commissioner Tally?
I saw from the, the written record that we have here that this was properly noticed to all of the other tenants in the building that this conditional use permit was being applied for because of the parking, or the use of potentially all of the parking on off-peak hours, and no comments or feedback was received.
So all property owners within 300 feet of the parcel were notified per zoning ordinance, and then there were three postings placed on-site regarding the conditional use permit, proposed conditional use permit. Staff received a single phone call requesting the staff report and resolution, draft staff report resolution, be sent out to them from an adjacent property, and they had voiced possible concern of parking on their lot, and they were informed by staff that the conditional use permit was not applicable to their lot, and that there should be no parking from this proposed use on their lot, and that seemed to assuage their concerns.
And I assume the building owner is aware of this proceeding incorrect, so obviously...
Correct.
...he's got to be worried, or not worried about the parking impact to his other tenants.
Right, so staff required a draft shared parking agreement that was provided by the property owner's legal representative and themselves, and then in addition, all discretionary projects do require a property owner's signature in order for them to be processed.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, following along those lines, it's curious to me, because we have ten pounds in a five-pound bag there, and we got to make sure that we alternate the people in and out of there appropriately. Do, do the existing tenants know that their lease will be restricted in the, in the hours of the church operation?
I do not know if they are aware of that.
Do we know whether or not there is even a lease restriction involved? The write-up, with this parking agreement, it would seem to me that it would be appropriate that the lease would also mirror the utilization of the property, obviously. For example, if I'm a tenant there and now I've decided I want to extend my hours, I'm going to have a problem.
Point of order on that one, real quick. I worry about us delving into the legality of the lease hold between the, the building owner and the, and the lessor that he has there, which is why I kind of, I mean, I echo your concern, but I worry about us interfering in those private contracts based upon what we have.
Well, not interfering, I'm just curious. It seems to me you're going to have a joint parking agreement. We need to know that that would be backed up by a business operation as well, so...
We can delve into that with, during discussion.
Okay. All right. The other question I had is, there's somewhat of an ambiguous thing about evening classes. The, the one chart talks about evenings being Thursdays, and the other one could be any evening, as well as the Saturday, Sunday. Is it, to be, to be clear, is it only going to be evenings on Thursday, or is it going to be evenings every day?
The conditional use permit proposes for all evenings. It's beginning at 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and then all day Sunday. So Attachment 4, which goes over accessory uses, that is an example sheet of what we can expect from the use regarding those accessory uses.
Just go for a design review. Is there any way that we know that the church occupancy is going to conform to exiting requirements and bathroom requirements?
That would be subject to review by our building division, and they did review the project during our development management team review.
So we don't know that yet?
Not at, well, I'll defer to City Planner.
No, the occupancy was reviewed by the building official, Community Development Director, Bill King, at the time of DMT review, and they did look at exiting for that, so it did comply with exiting requirements.
So two doors was enough?
I, I can't remember off the top of my head if that's what the amount was, but I do know that it was reviewed and approved by the building official.
Okay, does the ADA apply because it's a private church? It does? Okay. Then I would also say that that may be an issue with the bathrooms on the second floor. I can't quite tell how the second floor ties into this. There's a second floor plan with bathrooms and some other meeting rooms that don't look accessible in terms of an elevator.
So the second floor contains, I believe, the bathrooms, and we can double-check with the applicant regarding that. I know that building did have significant questions regarding the bathrooms and making sure that they are ADA compliant, and again, as Amber, as City Planner said, the building division did sign off on this project through our DMT review regarding those ADA compliance issues and have conditioned the project.
I didn't see an elevator.
And I...
This looks like the sanctuary is on the second floor. Anyway, I, this sort of a side issue, but I'm, I just want to make sure there's Apollo 3 that, that exiting, fire exiting, and ADA compliance is well noted, because it kind of jumped us out at me as an issue.
And I will follow up and just say that they do, are required to get a building permit after this as well in order to change the occupancy of this lease, so they'll be required there as well to comply with all those requirements.
Yeah, other than that, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I think most of those will be covered under conditions of approval 14 through 17 on that. Is the applicant here, and would they like to make any comments?
Hi, thank you for considering our request. My name's Jay Benitez. I'm part of the congregation at, at Calvary, San Clemente, and we are a local church, community-centered church. We participate heavily in a number of the civic activities that San Clemente, you know, love San Clemente, Ocean Fest, and a number of Cinco de Mayo, and a number of the other, the spectacular Easter events and things like that. We've been operating out of the Vista School in, off, in Talega, and have kind of outgrown that, that space. We've been involved in the community for now eight years. We just had our eight-year anniversary, so we're excited about that, and we're looking to find a, a place that we can call home and kind of put roots, further roots here in San Clemente. The facility that we are looking at is, as identified on Caie Recodo, has some modifications that we're prepared to do, bathrooms being some of those rail, chair, or stair rails as well. There are two bathrooms on the first floor that will, that are ADA compliant, or will become ADA compliant. We have to go through that building permit process to ensure that all the various details are taken considerate, are taken in consideration of. We're prepared to make those, those modifications, but on the whole, there are nominal, nominal changes that we need to make. We are planning on being good neighbors, and it would be inconsistent with, with our beliefs to encroach upon other, other people's property, especially if it's a, if it's a problem or without prior permission. If, for whatever reason, there are people that, within the, the tenancy that have concerns about parking or, or need to, and need to modify their, their hours, we currently don't exceed our 163. It will be a while before we get to 163 parishioners every, every service, so I think we've got some latitude there as well. As for the grounds, can't really speak to that. I think, as you indicated, that that's something that's the owner's responsibility, and certainly, you know, be happy to get the hose out if, if need be. We're looking forward to positive recommendation for, from you folks, and if you have any questions of me directly, feel free.
Thank you. Do we have questions for the applicant? I see no questions. So we will close the presentation portion, open it to public discussion and comment. Anyone from the public can speak for three minutes, and if you choose to, we have cards up front that we need filled out, so the recording secretary can keep things in order. Do we have any, no comments? Okay, we will close public comment and open for discussion. Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, I'll roll right in. I think this is a great use for the property. It seems to be well-maintained for the most part, less some minor landscape issues, and it appears to have enough room to accommodate the, the church use, and I'm very happy to see another, another use succeeding, so thus the subject pro, the project, you know, you're increasing your, your tenancy, and that's, that's great, glad to hear that. But I do have a question for, it's a partial question to April and to Mal, to Legal, regarding the parking lot, and I understand the property owner has some responsibility to maintain it, but when we have a relationship to the project, there might be a tie-in or a shared responsibility. At least in the discussion, we can get into what we can do about the parking lot at this point. And the parking lot, it's in decent, in decent condition, I'm sorry, I can't talk tonight, but it does need a little bit of attention. There are lots of oil stains, there are some markings that are, are very hard to read at, at the rear. There's some storage of building materials at the rear that limits at least one of the parking stalls, so you won't be able to back in all the way. And I think it'd be a good opportunity to, to ask that that get cleaned up as well as part of this application, and brought up to a level that is usable and, and nice-looking at minimum. So, the question is, is there enough of a relationship here to this project to, to justify a condition to clean up and maintain the parking lot, since it'll be used?
Sure. Planning Commissioners, this, this question arises from the Nolan-Dolan line of cases, and the idea of having an essential nexus between an exaction and, and the issues that we're seeking to mitigate and the entitlements being sought. If, if the question was, can we require them to repave the entire parking lot, the answer probably is no. Of course, if an applicant accepts a condition, then the condition is always legal, so there's, there's always that, always that answer, but because we are dealing with a, a question of adequate parking, requiring the parking stalls to be accessible, I think, would be allowed under Nolan-Dolan. You know, questions of restriping, you're getting more to, that's, that's more on the edge, I would, I would think, because again, this is not an application for any kind of a, a change to the structure. It's just a, a change for the use. So, you know, in terms of making it available, that's fine. Anything, anything beyond that, you might be in the gray area.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rowland?
Thank you. Yeah, the reason I ask about the, the occupancy, it's, it's, is because, I mean, we, we look at this, we permit this as a conditional use permit, while there are other types of uses that are automatically allowed, just to make sure that we're leveraging this, you know, this area for the way, for the reason that it was, you know, put in place. The primary reason is local employment, and churches tend to be a little less dense as far as employment is concerned than other types of uses, but I think, I just think it's a question we want to make sure we ask, just in case, you know, if we had 100% occupancy and there was, people were really pressed, and there was really a demand for more local employment, then, you know, it may be a different matter, but that's why we look at this as a conditional use permit, as opposed to an automatic use. I don't, I don't see an, an issue in that respect. But with some of the discussion we've had, I, I did get a, another question in my mind about the parking. We have these, you know, I like the fact that we've got the greater use of parking, sort of, you know, one business uses it till five, another business uses it after that, so it, it's a better use of that, of that, you know, of the land use of that parking. But I just wanted to make sure these other businesses, do they have any restrictions on their parking, or do we know if they have any restrictions on their parking? Because it suddenly occurs to me that I, I don't think that this would be a problem, but the possibility may be open, is if they can park there after 6:00 p.m., then there is, is at least legally an overlap in terms of the number of spaces that can be used by the church as well as the other businesses. Does that make sense, you know, what I said?
Yeah, so staff did not review all the independent leases associated with tenants existing in the building. Staff did check to see what the operations of each business were based on the business license submitted to the city, and none of them were stated as earlier than 7:00 a.m. or later than 5:00 p.m. for operations.
So, I'm just wondering, maybe for, you know, getting input from, from other people, do, I don't know, do we need to have a condition in there that if a new business comes in, they have to be constrained, or would it automat, they would, perhaps they would automatically be constrained? Maybe the existing businesses are, you know, like, checked out enough, but it's just, just across all our... across all our Ts and not all of our Is. I'm just wondering about, you know, potential, a small chance of potential impact with the parking like that, so that's my only thought on that.
Commissioner Tally?
So, I, I agree the parking feels tight, right? But, but the building owner has agreed to enter into the shared parking agreement and I think it's important that all 50 stalls are accessible, as we've heard, so that's probably a condition that, that's necessary to make sure that, that we actually are able to fulfill the, the conditions that are here. I did have a question about the comment that was made on the, the business park and, and its primary goal being local employment. I'm just not familiar with that, so I want to make sure that if we're approving this, that our, that we're all on the same, same page there. Is, because I thought the general plan had some, I mean, even the specific plan had a range of uses that was there. I saw relocating businesses and expanding businesses, but I just, I, I want to make sure that, that it's not employment because to your point, there wouldn't be a lot of employment in this. There's, there's a lot of use, probably not a lot of employment. Is that, is that something that, that is codified?
First to the specific plan, talking to the specific plan, the specific plan does encourage a wide range of uses in the business park. The goal of, of that business park was to help have, yes, an employment base, but have opportunities for existing local businesses to grow as well as to relocate some businesses that were on El Camino Real that were not, that were better suited in a business park environment to be relocated to the business park. So there are a mix of goals for any business park. The general plan does state the same thing, that it encourages a mix of uses and it even calls out, you know, public assembly as, as one of those.
And the only other thing I would say is having been a tenant in a building that, that actually had a church next door in, in an office park in Talega, parking, you know, because I would go to work on Saturday or Sunday if I needed to stop by and parking was sometimes a bit more of a challenge, but it was never to the point where I complained to the landlord about, about that and, and I would suspect, I would hope that the landlord has communicated with the other tenants and made them aware of, you know, the potential issues that they might have or, or might not have. But as I said earlier to Commissioner Smith on, on that line of question, I think that's kind of a private matter between the landlord and the, and his tenants, so I, I think it's a great use for the, for the building and I'm supportive.
Very good. Commissioner Smith?
Well, I like the use of the building. I like the, the fact that, so he's getting used that would be otherwise empty and I think utilization of a facility as much as possible is always a good thing. Hopefully churches grow and I'm, I have a question, I guess, about the occupancy issue here of 163 seats. I'm not quite clear, is that based on the parking requirement or on the square footage?
So, the 163 seats is what the applicant proposed to staff for their assembly area? The, for planning staff, we use that number to assess parking. I can't speak to the occupancy requirement. Would city planner happen to know?
So, when it comes to occupancy, if we have it based on the maximum number of people that can be in the building, we artificially limit the occupancy, so therefore it can't be more than 163.
Okay, so should the church grow and congregation, they would have to find not necessarily more space, but more parking?
Well, they still have nine additional parking spaces, so they could grow a little bit larger in their existing facility, but not much larger. So, yes, if they, you know, are incredibly successful, which we hope that they are, then they would need to find another location in the future to help accommodate their congregation.
Okay, so another nine, kind of like four people do a parking spot, the way I looked at the numbers, so it'd be like another, they could grow another 36 or so. I, I think that's good. It's, it's nice to have some wiggle room if you're going to make a commitment for a church in a space. And, you know, the concerns that I voiced earlier, I'm, I'm hoping those do get worked out because I would hate to see any misunderstandings regarding the, the shared parking and the use of the building, but other than that, I'm very supportive of the project. I think it's good.
Very good. I also think that the use is appropriate for the building. That's one of the things we're deciding here. The shared parking agreement, I think we should encourage both staff and city attorney to look into possibly some language in it that makes sure that the owner understand, I know it has to be recorded, it's for this site, this tenant and the owner, but that the owner has a responsibility to control the other tenants, to make sure that they don't exceed their hours anticipated. And is that possible to do in the parking agreement? Okay, very good. As far as landscaping and the crib wall, I think that's probably one to pass along to code enforcement to make sure that those are taken care of because that is definitely a concern. I think Mr., Commissioner Smith's concern for exiting is certainly a valid one, but looking at the conditions of approval, I think in there, the building department will make sure that is appropriate and on the exiting. And then we have one other issue we haven't discussed and that's the amplified sound request. And I don't see a problem, but again, if it's reviewed or we get complaints, we are allowed to control that, correct?
Yes, there are conditions of approval and they're from code compliance and planning regarding the amplified sound and best management practices as well as if it becomes a nuisance.
Very good. And so I am in support of the project also and just want to make sure we do encourage the property owner to maintain his building. And I assume there's also probably an association in the park that also has some responsibility for keeping the applicants, or the owners in compliance with their rules also. So, any other questions or discussion?
One more question. I meant to ask this of Mel earlier. Special condition 34 and 35.
They are now. I don't support adding those conditions in.
So, just to clarify, those conditions are just standard as part of the zoning ordinance and in effort to help make applicants aware of some of the requirements that the city's laws require, additional code compliance conditions have been added. You'll probably notice that you have a lot more code compliance conditions in this set of reports and I have reached out to co-compliance manager Adam Matamian and asked him to come and give a study session to planning commission just to go over co-compliance efforts and address the conditions of approval that you see in there. But again, the applicant and any applicant would be held to these requirements regardless because they're just city laws.
Well, well, let's, let's make a point of distinction on that. They would be held to enforceable city laws, but as our city attorney pointed out, any condition, if accepted by the applicant, becomes binding upon him regardless of the legality thereof. And I, I believe that both of those items have been preempted by federal law and, and do not support putting those into a condition of permit. And you'll hear me say that for any conditional use permit that comes up or any, anything. As a certificated, remote and unmanned aircraft pilot, I, I believe that the FAA lawsuit precedes that and I don't believe it's appropriate for us to place an undue restriction upon any applicant regardless of their, of what they're doing. So, I, I can't support those two.
Three, four, and five?
Thirty-four and 35.
So, your objection is that you, is that the, you think the FAA covers this and that the-
I think there's been federal-
And that the city doesn't have, you know, the standing or the authority to require this of the applicant?
I think the city has the ability to, as we heard earlier, have a conditional use that's put upon, that an applicant agrees to. They could ask for anything and the applicant agrees to it, then it's binding. But I don't think that the, the ordinance as it's written is, I think it's been preempted by federal law. And so I, I don't think that there's a reason for us to put that in there and as a pilot and if our chairman was here, he'd probably agree. It's a slippery slope once you start letting the municipality regulate airspace.
Do you, do you see these as onerous to the applicant in some way?
I think they're onerous in general to the public.
I'm going to jump in real quick and whether it's in here or not, if it's a city ordinance, they have to comply to it. All, typically, I'm not a fan of huge conditions and lengthy list just restating the rules and laws. They're already there, they're actually just a, a benefit to the applicant who may not be aware of them and doesn't do the research. And in some jurisdictions I've seen where they do an attachment that isn't part of the application, just as a warning to tenants and applicants of potential stumbling blocks that they may run into that they aren't aware of. So, I kind of concur that whether it's here or not, if, I think we would err on the conservative side to not include them.
Because if the ordinance has changed-
Precisely.
Then, then these are more binding than the ordinance.
And if Mal agrees with that, I would suggest that might be the way we go.
There's no issue with removing these, keeping them in. It doesn't really matter.
That's the way I see it.
There is, with this, with this particular ordinance, there's, there's an interesting question of law, right? So I think every city in Orange County has adopted essentially the same ordinance that regulates drone usage. There are those, Mr. Tally included, that feel like this ordinance is preempted by the FAA and by FAA regulations and case law. I am by no means a drone expert or an FAA expert, but this could be taken out and it wouldn't impact at all. The applicants need to abide by the law if it was deemed enforceable.
Thank you. Do we have any, Commissioner Blackwell?
Yep, yep. So, I do have another question for Amber. Is there overnight parking or either one, overnight parking allowed in this zone or at this property even?
There is not and in fact, there's a condition of approval. Let me find it, from code compliance regarding parking, starting condition of approval 39. And this actually touches upon the previous comment you made, Commissioner Blackwell, about the parking lot currently having possible storage onsite. That wouldn't be permissible either and would be code compliance.
You said 39, addresses overnight parking?
Beginning at 39.
I'm sorry, I must have missed the overnight parking.
The applicant, oh, I'm sorry, 40. The applicant shall be responsible for ensuring that overnight parking of vehicles does not occur.
Okay, excellent. Okay, and then condition number 42, addresses trash and storage trailers, debris, that sort of thing, so that would effectively address that. Okay, thank you. Oh, so I too am in support of this project. I think that the conditions are, are sound and that this is going to prove to be a, a good use of, a good use of space, so I'm in full support of the project.
Very good. Commissioner Smith?
Well, assuming that we're okay with leaving 34 and 35 in, I was going to make the motion to approve. Actually, I thought 34, 35 has relevance to not confusing unmanned aircraft and drones with possible angels. That's why I thought that was in there, but, and could be relevant then, but other than that, can I make a motion?
Yeah, but let's do a quick straw vote on one, removing 34 and 35 and before the motion is made and, or leaving it. So, how many would be in support of removing it?
May I ask one question? This is going, this is a standard condition, these are two standard conditions of approval. They're going to show up with other projects. Are we going to start just removing it?
Quite possibly.
Across the board? So is that something that we're going to look forward to not seeing?
I think what I'd like to do is at the end of this, when we're going over staff wrap-up, you know, and just reports, that would be one of the things that I would want to report on and then we can come back and discuss it when it's agendized.
Yeah, to Mel's point, it's still enforceable, whether it's here or not.
The ordinance is there and if that was challenged, that's fine. It's just, this becomes more restrictive and as a matter of course, I won't support anything that has those two conditions of use in regardless. But I mean, that's just my personal-
So what was, what was our count on removing?
I'll support it either way because legally it's got justice binding.
So if you want to make your motion accordingly, that's fine or?
To remove.
Yeah, if you're comfortable with that.
Okay. Well, then I would like to make the motion that we approve resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving conditional use permit CUP 17-241 Calvary Chapel, San Clemente, a request to operate church services with associated ancillary uses and allow a shared parking agreement in an existing office building located at 1031 Calle Recordo, Suite C, with the exception that we omit number 34 and 35 of the special conditions.
Do we have a second? Was that five?
Sure.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Blackwell seconded.
And do we need to note that this is, I didn't hear, do we need to note that this is resolution number PC 18-003?
We do. That should be in the record, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, passes 5-0. And I would encourage staff to, on two items was have code enforcement follow-up on the landscaping and compliance issues of the building and that in the drafting of the shared parking agreement, it makes sure that the owner understands that he needs to control all tenants for the parking to comply.
And also, number 40.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, I forgot to bring this up earlier. Condition 42 requires that the striping be in good repair, so I just wanted-
Yeah, that's there also. So congratulations and look forward to you having a huge success.
Appreciate it.
Sure. Veronica does a good job. Okay, our next item, item 8B, zoning amendment 17-412, a city-initiated amendment of the San Clemente municipal code, title 17, zoning for Phase 2, comprehensive zoning code updates. And Amy Stonich is making the presentation. And this is what we were reviewed in the study session.
That's correct.
On, I think, the 17th or something like that.
That's correct. Good evening Chair and members of the commission. My name's Amy Stonich and I'll just give a brief presentation on Phase 2. You did see Phase 1 in the study session. The comprehensive zoning code update was initiated following the adoption of the Centennial General Plan and that was adopted in February of 2014. Phase 1 of the zoning update was completed in 2015. It included updates to the zoning map, amendments to the commercial and mixed-use zones, and the city held multiple study sessions to gather input. As you'll recall, we held a study session on January- As you'll recall, we held a study session on January 17th to consider the proposed changes for Phase Two. In Phase Two, we clarified that the goal is to, number one, ensure consistency with the zoning code and general plan, and number two, to incorporate housing element objectives. Future phases will include Phase Three and Four. Phase Three will focus on updates to the West Pico Corridor and the Pier Bowl specific plans. Oops. Phase Four will be more comprehensive and will include amendments to the zoning code and zoning map formatting, incorporation of high-priority implementation items based on Planning Commission and City Council direction, adding specific planned land uses to the zoning map, incorporating specific planned development standards in the zoning code, environmental review as necessary, and ensuring consistency with specific plans and the general plan. So our proposed timeline is before you. With the support of the Planning Commission, we anticipate that these amendments would be implemented by May of 2018. Briefly, two examples of updates that were incorporated into this zoning amendment will include vehicle-related uses and the architectural overlay. As it's related to vehicle-related uses, the Centennial General Plan has new policies for existing and new automobile-related uses. The proposed zoning amendments address the vehicle-related uses for consistency with these policies. The amendments incorporated into the zoning amendment will address the goals and policies related to other types of Spanish architecture on properties within two segments of El Camino Real west of Interstate 5. It will also preserve and reinforce the original architecture of significant structures that are not Spanish colonial revival, such as Art Deco and mid-century modern. So in your staff report, there are three attachments: the Planning Commission resolution and the draft ordinance, and a zoning map amendment, a matrix outlining revisions for the February 2018 that you have before you, and the Planning Commission's study session report, which includes the red line amendments that you looked through at the study session. The draft ordinance remains the same as the red line amendments we reviewed in January with one exception of a change that was included in the density bonus and senior housing section of the code. This minor amendment will make the section of the code consistent with the general plan updates and with state law. Oh, I have pop-ups here. Sorry about that. Listen. In closing, I would like to mention that there is a copy of Page Nine of the report, which was mistakenly absent from the packet. Before you is staff's recommendation to open the public hearing, determine the project exempt from SEQA, and adopt the resolution before you recommend the City Council adopt the draft ordinance for Zoning Amendment 17412. Available to answer any questions.
Any questions for--
I've got one question, and I apologize I missed the study session. But I noticed one of the things that we talked about in -- or we modified in here was the mixed-use zones, and we talked about plate heights. Did we kind of bring any clarity to the plate height discussion? Because we had that before us several sessions ago, I think, on an issue. And I didn't know if that was discussed. And if so, I apologize for bringing it up again.
So in this one before you tonight, no, which doesn't discuss the plate height in the terms of getting into depth about what that section actually is and what it requires. That will come before you, not with the specific plans, which would be Phase Three, but in Phase Four. And we will have a study session before that in order to get clarity on what the intent was behind it, give you history, and get some direction before we bring that back. But that is one of the items to bring back to you, but it's not in this one tonight.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, we will close the presentation, open for public comment. I see we have no public comments, so we'll open for discussion. We have reviewed this once before at the study session level and did a page-by-page turn of it. Does anyone here feel we need to go and do a page-by-page turn again? Or are you comfortable with what you've seen? Or do you have any specific items that raise concern?
Good.
Good. Do we have a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion. I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number PC 18-004, a resolution to the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, recommending that the City Council make SEQA findings and adopt an ordinance titled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California for a City-Initiated Amendment" ZA 17-412 to the City of San Clemente Municipal Code Title 17, Zoning, to achieve consistency between those documents and the adopted Centennial General Plan for Phase Two of the Comprehensive Zoning Code pursuant to Government Code Section 65860.
Seconded.
Do we have a second by Commissioner Smith? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Very good. Congratulations. Amy, nice job.
After all that.
After all that. Okay, so we have -- the next item would be new business. Do we have any new business? Old business? Any reports of commissioners and staff?
I do.
Good. Mr. Coastal?
Mr. Coastal Advisory Committee Member, Smith. In the last meeting that we had, we had a very interesting presentation from CR and R, our waste management company, that helps San Clemente, but not necessarily our surrounding communities, I found out, but they do help us. And they gave us a presentation of what they're up to. And it was so interesting that I decided I have to tell you about it, in case you don't know about it. But we really have probably one of the best waste management companies in the United States working for us. They do a fantastic job, and they're literally obliterating the trash so that hardly anything goes into the ground. And any toxics or anything like that just is gone. And they're able to do this by various techniques, including sorting the trash very carefully, but also they have a digestive system in Paris, located in Paris, not France, but Paris around the corner here, where they truck everything there. And the green waste and the food waste is digestible. It's one of the few digesting systems in the world. We'll do both at the same time. So we're way out there. Had the Netherlands on the scene. And so what comes out of that is essentially compost and fertilizer, of that stuff. And the really good thing about it is that if everybody sends their stuff in the right direction, i.e. food scraps, we won't end up with a lot of food scraps up in the landfill. And the landfill has been a notorious bad source of seagull food. Seagull food, bringing seagulls that then pollute our coastlines. And if we can cut off their food at the De Shaka landfill, then they'll be discouraged and they'll fly away to other places. So the side benefit of this is really immense because there's a terrible, terrible seagull problem. And we're spending thousands of dollars on falcons to scare birds away, but this is really more to the source. It gets to their food source. And so if we attack their food source and we also attack their source of fresh water, such as poachy and other areas like that, then hopefully our seagull problem that's really bad along the coast and especially by the pier is going to diminish. And so that's really good. It's really good that it does that for us because it's targeted specifically about a bird problem that's really bad for our trash and bugs and everything else. And then the other benefit I found out about this is that your infamous green bin that you fill with your tree clippings and stuff, that every so often gets full and you go to your neighbors and say, can I borrow your green bin? You can ask for an extra green bin for free with them. They'll give you one. So they're really on board with helping you out and doing a bunch of other good things. And I guess now I hear that I was going to take a tour of the facility, and now I'm hearing City Council people want to go. And maybe you would want to participate and see this too. It really is relevant to what's going on. It's a big part of managing our community's health and safety. So the tour was going to be tomorrow, but it got canceled. So it's going to be rescheduled. I'll let you know when that might be happening. Anyway.
Thank you. Amber, any announcements?
We have several announcements. The first one I'd like to make is that since our last Planning Commission meeting, we have brought on another permanent staff member. It's our senior current planning staff member. Her name is Stephanie Rojas, and she happens to actually be at the back of the forum there tonight, just observing and wanted to see you, gentlemen. So I wanted to make sure that you knew that we did have a new permanent staff member. So we're very, very excited about that. Stephanie has a very impressive background. She's worked at Lake Forest, Mission Viejo, Costa Mesa, and Irvine was her last location that she was at. She's very active with the American Planning Association. That's the planners', you know, certification organization, as well as a number of other professional organizations. And we're very excited to have her. So just be looking out for her in the near future at this podium, too.
I'm on board.
Equally wonderful is that the LUP was approved by the California Coastal Commission during our last meeting. I cannot tell you what a huge joint effort that was, not only between you guys, who spent a lot of time poring over that document to get it to City Council for their recommendation, but I really can't speak highly enough to the consultants that we brought on board for this program, including Lesleya Meyerhoff and the consultants at DUDAC, which included Anne Blumpker and Amber Garrity. Even after the meeting itself, I mean, we were there making revisions to the very last minute, to the point where they were calling recesses to throw -- to appease the city, basically, and agree to the things that we just could not agree on previously, which was wonderful. And without them, it would have been such a much harder trek. And Cecilia Gallardo-Daly, the Community Development Director, gave an amazing speech, as did James Maxionoff, the city manager, and Tim Brown, the mayor, really gave a tremendous speech as well. I don't know how many comments we got after the meeting about how wonderful the mayor's speech was. And so it was a huge accomplishment. We are very excited. It is just the first step in the process. As you know, the LUP is the first item. We are currently working on the sea level rise. That's going to be coming before you in the near future. And that will review sea level rise and a vulnerability assessment. And then finally, we are also working on the implementation program, which is the big part that actually implements the LUP. I always think of it like a general plan and a zoning ordinance. The same thing with the LUP and the IP. So lots of things there. And then the other item I just want to bring up, it had to do with code enforcement, which we alluded to a little bit tonight. In seeing the reports, I did notice that there were a lot of code compliance conditions of approval. And as Commissioner Crandall stated, the goal of those was to make applicants aware that these requirements are out there based on city laws. But I think it's a very important point that you make, Commissioner Tally, that there's a difference between educating somebody and then potentially holding them to something that they don't realize that they're agreeing to. So I also really liked, Commissioner Crandall, your comment about having an attachment potentially that just kind of identifies these are potential zoning ordinance requirements that may apply to you or municipal code requirements. So what I'll do is I'll take that back to the Community Development Department as a whole, so that way we can discuss it. And then we will bring that to you at a study session that's agendized, so we can discuss it further at that time.
Thank you.
But I just wanted to get that out there.
That's great.
Yeah. And that's it for me. I apologize for saying so.
Okay. Any other information anybody wants to present? Do we have a motion of adjournment?
Sure. I note that we adjourn to the next study session of the Planning Commission, held at 6:00 p.m. on March 21st, 2018, in Council Chambers at City Hall.
I apologize. Before you actually read that, I just wanted to note that on April 4th, we have the Planning Commissioners Academy. And at that meeting, Commissioner Crandall and Commissioner Brown and myself will be attending as part of the League of Cities. And so I wanted to get an understanding from the commissioners. I think it would be appropriate to cancel that meeting if you're agreeable to that. We don't have anything on the agenda at that time, but I just wanted to bring that up so that way we can plan for that.
So you're suggesting we cancel the March 21st meeting?
The April 4th meeting.
April 4th meeting.
Yeah. So it's just more of an informational, so that way we can notice it properly.
And you don't see a backlog that will be created by that?
No. You'll have a little heavier agendas on the 21st and on the following meeting. But no, there was nothing that was dire that had to go on that meeting date.
Very good. Do you need confirmation from us to do that?
No, we don't. I just wanted to make sure that everybody would be okay with that to kind of help us plan.
Very good.
Not as long as you'd think. I would say the one after that has a couple items on it, but yeah, yeah.
And if ever necessary, we can always call a special meeting.
18th will be a report.
So do we have a second to--
I would second that. Well, I didn't read through the adjournment.
Oh, you didn't read through it. Go ahead and read through the adjournment.
I'll go ahead and start over. I move that we adjourn to the next study session of the Planning Commission that will be held at 6:00 p.m. on March 21st, 2018, in Council Chambers at City Hall located at 100 Avenida Presidio, San Clemente, California, as the March 7th, 2018 study session and Planning Commission meetings have been canceled due to lack of business.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Very good.